Okay. Now, you were saying that...
I think I was saying that unless there are other questions, I'm looking forward to continuing our conversation on Thursday.
I had a quick one, relationship to the special ed things you've just been talking about was, in terms of trend analysis of the numbers and what we base the budget in past years, in the past several years, we've also had more placements that have come on during the middle of the years to have some budget spikes that then have had to take away from other programs in order to cover those. Is there anything further that we should be doing or that we need to be looking at to avoid another spike in terms of what you've proposed in this year's budget? What are the trends, you know, in other comparable districts that they've had regarding special ed costs and the number of changes that have taken place during the course of the year so that we maybe have a plus in that area as opposed to a minus, but then not looking to budget a plus, I'm just looking to budget more accurately than seen the past couple of years have happened to us?
Sure. I think that I can speak to that broadly. I'd also want to be cautious to say that I don't believe that our special education costs have ever directly affected programming that is offered to any other students in the school district. In the budgets that I've presented, I haven't come forward and said, "We can't do something else that we really want to do because of special education costs." So it has been a driver of our costs going up, but I wouldn't characterize it as at the cost of any other students. I would say that I think that we have looked for patterns, and what we have seen when we've looked at our outplacements is that we had outplacements that were primarily falling into two categories. We saw students at the youngest grades who may have been identified on the autism spectrum that we weren't servicing here in the whole, in the home district, we were sending out for service elsewhere. And we had some students at the high school level who were being placed out for what may have been social, emotional concerns at the high school level and sending them to smaller environments where they were being more successful. We think that the first two recommendations that we have put forward in that area, the Bright Connections Program, which we've launched with success this year, and the alternative high school are the two first and most important areas where we need to build that local capacity. In both of those cases, we have worked on providing those alternatives with current staffing. So Bright Connections did involve some small increase in related service time and in paratime, but we didn't increase a teaching position this year when we added the Bright Connections Program. Next year, we're looking to be very creative with teaching time and to try to use current staffing to provide that swing program in the evening. This proposal will include some dollars to support the alternative high school, but we do not have staffing positions in this, in this request to staff that alternative high school. We're looking to do that with existing current staffing levels. If we can continue to do that, I do believe that that was the first and most important recommendation that came out of the futures report, and I do believe that while right now we are experiencing costs on both ends, we do have increasing tuition costs and I'm asking this community to invest in the local programming, and I know that that is the most uncomfortable time, but we're not going to turn that, that pattern until we build the local capacity. You've got to have the local program first before you can sit with a parent and say that we can provide and provide for your child here in the, in the home district. So I do anticipate, I think that's stronger than saying that I hope that we will control the tuition line, I anticipate that if we put these programs in place and do them well and resource them appropriately, that we will begin to slow the rate of increase in the tuition line. I don't know that we will go back, but I know that we'll slow the rate of increase. The cost of everything is increasing, so if we can slow the rate of increase and bring it into alignment with just with our regular growth in other areas, then that would be an enormous accomplishment. In other school districts that have made these sorts of investments, Simsberry, Simsberry has a very rich and robust program for their youngest students who are on the autism spectrum, and they don't have a need to place those students out of district. In districts that can provide that local capacity and do it really well, there is sometimes the opportunity to see tuition that actually flows into a school district, because if we have a program in a specific area and we have excess capacity, then we may become a sending district for students in other schools that aren't receiving the programming they need, and they can come here, in fact, offsetting our local costs with tuition funds from other school districts. I'm not suggesting that, that we will level that or that we will turn this into a revenue center in the near future. That doesn't happen. Simsberry has had their program, I believe, for 10 years. It takes time to grow that capacity. We started very small this year. The high school initiative next year is intended to be small, but that means we need to look ahead and plan for growth, because if we start small, we know that it's going to mean growth in the future. I would be thrilled to be able to stand here next year and say that we need to ask for more special ed teachers to support those programs, but be able to point out to you that our tuition growth is at a percent that's in alignment with the growth of the rest of our budget and not at something different. Our tuition line is increasing by a much larger percentage than our overall budget is increasing. That's the discrepancy that we need to, to control, but we need to do it in the right way. We need to do it by providing properly for those students and their families in the district, and I think that we're in, we're moving in the right direction. I'm happy to start to break that out for you more clearly into a five-year prospectus, and I know that I will need Ginny Brown in that office to help me put that together, but we can begin having those conversations as we go through this budget cycle as well.
Okay. Do you want to just summarize the timeline? I know you've got some amended dates here.
The next most important date is this Thursday evening, where we will be meeting at Baldwin School with the full administrative team to invite the administrative team into the conversations that we've started here tonight, so that some of the questions that you have asked won't be answered simply by me, they'll be answered by our principals and by the extended team. Moving on, the next series of important dates, or most important dates for the community are on January 28th and 29th with a pair of public hearings. That'll happen in the evenings at Adams Middle School between...
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, yes. We also have some joint committee meetings with the Board of Finance in the interim. We look to have a Board of Education adoption on February, what are we looking at for Board of Education?
February four.
And then, again, most importantly, after we have our budget adopted, we will present it to the Board of Finance on February 19th. The Board of Finance will begin working in earnest on the whole budget, the school budget combined with the town budget. We have an April 2nd annual budget meeting and a tentative referendum date at this time of April 9, where the entire budget, school and town combined, will be adopted. There is also bonding conversations that are taking place in the Facilities Committee, where we are looking at having a bonding request that'll come forward to be paired with this overall budget request. At this time, while we have the basis of that prepared, Mr. Gurnum and Mr. Bowden and I are looking at all of our schools and considering whether there needs to be an adjustment to that bond request for safety and security concerns. We're doing those evaluations this week and next, and we'll then go to the Facilities Committee with a recommendation for adjusting that bond request.
Okay.
And the entire budget timeline is posted on our website for the community and for anybody who wants to look at specific dates.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the proposed budget, what's availability of that to the public as far as they're getting involved in conversations?
I don't believe the proposed budget is posted on our website until this board has adopted your proposed budget. This is still...
So that'll happen after...
No, no. Typically, it would be, this version would be posted.
Are we, are we posting?
It's up in the next couple of days.
No, it wouldn't be posted until we got it.
Until you got it.
After this meeting, but it'll be up in the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you give a follow-up on my report?
Yes, you do.
Again, I do apologize for the length of this report tonight. I'll try to make those very brief. We have started meeting with, the board had asked for a regular item to update you on teacher evaluation. Our in-district committee, the committee is a representative committee, including Mrs. Dudley, administrative representation from central office in all three levels, as well as a healthy number of teacher representatives. We have unpacked the 48 pages of state guidelines and talked about what our, our local evaluation must include to meet the mandates. We've talked about our local values and what we feel our local system must include to remain true to ourselves and the work that we have done. We have begun to break into subcommittees to do the work of chunking out that evaluation system. The first subcommittee will meet this Friday to begin work in earnest on our evaluation framework, a required template that will have to guide every observation an administrator makes as, as he or she moves into a teacher's classroom. At the same time, we continue to participate in conversations at the state. The week of December 11th through the 14th, I was involved in a couple of conversations with the commissioner. The commissioner has acknowledged that the implementation of this new system might require some adjustment. He pulled a representative group together to advise him on what those adjustments could look like. He seemed very inclined to make some adjustments to the implementation timeline, and then I know that he has been very distracted with other matters, and we await an announcement from Hartford on whether or not there will be some adjustment and whether or not we will be able to take a bit of a breath in how we roll out this new evaluation system. We continue to plan and move forward, planning for a full implementation on July 1, and when we receive notice that there's some amendment to that, we will then adjust our plan and our timeline accordingly. But there's a lot of work going on at that level on that front. I also just wanted to touch, Dr. Moore asked if I could mention considerations for technology and specific online learning opportunities. On January 17th, our in-house technology committee will be meeting for the first time. Dr. Myers is a board representative to that committee. I wanted to get the first meeting under our belts, as that'll be sort of a structural meeting, and then I intend to share those invitations with all board members when those meetings happen. At this meeting, I will be giving that committee their charge, and it will include looking at such areas as the Common Core State Standards Assessment. The assessment for Common Core State Standards that we heard mentioned earlier tonight, it will be implemented in, in 2015 for the first time, will be a fully computerized online assessment. Our students will not be using number two pencils. They will be taking the actual assessment on a computer or a tablet. It is an interactive, computerized assessment, completely web-based. They will be signing in with their identification number. One of our most immediate needs is to make sure that our, both our hardware and our infrastructure is prepared to, to absorb that. So that is the first charge, that we can administer that assessment without crashing. Additionally, we will be asking them to talk about BYOD, asking students to not just bring, but in fact be encouraged to bring and use their personal devices in school actively in class, using smartphones and tablets as learning devices, not encouraging them to leave them in their lockers or hide them in the classroom, but to use them proactively. I'm going to be asking that group to look at social networks as learning tools, to talk both about how to appropriately structure social networks in school settings so that teachers are being responsible about the big commercial social networks that exist and whether or not they engage students in those networks, but also looking at the newly emerging, more limited social networks that are targeted as learning environments, where a teacher has a social network that exists only between him or her and your 20 students or 120 students, and engaging in those conversations, as well as looking at applications of asynchronous and online learning, both as an enhancement to our classroom instruction as well as an option to offer along with our line, our online instruction. Additionally, that committee's been asked to, to enter into a conversation with the policy committee, to look at the existing policy more immediately, and there are dollars in this budget that go into, we've got more electronic text purchases than we've ever had in a past budget, we've got more tablet and reader purchases than we've ever had in any past budget. We have the Technology Integration Specialist position, which should be somebody who can help us to grow both the enhancement of our classrooms with online options as well as options to our in-class course offerings. So we don't have an answer, we're not done, but we are wading into the discussion.
And that committee, I guess, one of the biggest challenges we talked about for online learning is just figuring out processes to determine what is legit and what's not, how to give credit and how not. Is that something that's going to fall into that committee?
Absolutely. We will expect them to help us vet options, to look at the various offerings and find ones that meet our expectations for quality, but also the limited understanding of the research in that area that I have continues to reinforce that the best options are, are options that include both. An experience that includes real face-to-face classroom work and online opportunities, not one or the other. So we need to work harder to begin to make sure, as universities have, that every class offering has an electronic or digital or web-based or online component, and we need to try to see if we're going to look at, at online learning as an option to our class catalog, how we do that and do that in a way that is, it meets our quality expectations. So again, we don't have an answer, but this budget does bend to support that conversation, and it's a conversation that we need to move into. And I think that that could be my report for the evening, and thank you for all the time that you've allowed for it.
Important pieces.
No, that's true. Eight point one on the agenda is act on a personnel item, and that is to ratify the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Rita Cusano, who's a reading teacher at Cox and has been for 25 years. So is there a motion to ratify her retirement?
Some won't.
Second? All in favor?
I agree.
All right. Well, with our...
And with thanks and congratulations and all that.
So she's planning ahead, obviously. She didn't want to wait until late in the year to get that N, eh? Be the rush. Okay. We've already done eight point two, really, unless somebody else wants to do anything more. We've already done eight point three. Eight point four is the school calendar, and we did get, we talked about this a little bit already with some communications. You know, I know that it was developed really through a committee process, and we did do a survey, I think, a year ago.
Yes.
Was it a year ago or two years ago? No, no. Yeah.
Well, we also did a very quick survey in last June, and last year was the first year without a February break in the formal calendar, and at the end of last year, we asked, in both ways, we asked, "I prefer the four-day weekend corresponding with President's Day in February rather than a full week in February," and then we asked the same question in the opposite direction. "I prefer a five-day week off in February compared to the long weekend." We sent out 4,344 requests to respond to that survey, to each of the families, to each of the home numbers in our, in our school messenger system. We received 1,320 responses, which is actually a good response rate. It's a more than a 25 percent response rate, and what we received back was 53 percent respondents in both questions favored the long weekend to the full week off. We had 44 percent who favored the week off, and about 3 percent in both questions who had no preference in either direction. It's also worth noting, I think February break is the most interesting item on the calendar. There's a couple of other things I do want to draw your attention to. So the survey results, again, lead us to, to not present a full week off in February this year. I'd also note that, again, it's only the second year in a row that we're not off during February. I do know that those responses will tend to trend in the direction of what people become comfortable with. I would expect in the first year of not having February that we'd see the lowest support for that change, but I also want to point out that this calendar aligns us more fully with the LEARN regional template. The school districts who participate in the LEARN RES have been asked to try to bring the calendars together. That doesn't generate necessarily any sort of financial efficiency for us, but it does generate financial efficiencies for some school districts within that RES who send students out to various high schools, they don't have their own home high school. By having schools aligned, it provides, I'm not sure if efficiency is the right word, but for, for staff members who work in Guilford but live in neighboring towns, or for residents in Guilford who work in neighboring school districts, it helps to align the vacation weeks. I also want to note that I'm particularly cautious about returning a February break in this presented budget, in this presented calendar, because as we look next year at our 14-15 calendar, we may need to look at extending our April vacation. Right now, the construction calendar is not finalized, and there's still a lot to know when we begin breaking ground, but there is a possibility that we will be looking at a mid-year move across the April break, and if we're looking at a, a building move over the April break, if we have that opportunity, we should take advantage of that opportunity so that the demolition can happen earlier and we will have a better opening in the following September. If there's a necessity to look at possibly extending the April vacation by adding a long weekend on either side, to put February back this year and then maybe need to take it out next year to accommodate that April, the extra April length, I worry about a calendar that goes back and forth. Whether or not people favor the full week or the long weekend, I think everybody favors consistency and predictability as opposed to changing year to year. And finally, the only other thing that I would state is that currently statute requires us to have our 180 days in by June 30th, and, you know, with the continued unpredictable weather, I begin to worry about school calendars that include both February and April breaks and then having an annual hurricane or a tough snow season. So far, we've been fortunate in that we haven't had snow and hurricane in the same calendar year, but should that happen...
Sure we did.
I mean, significant snow.
That was pretty significant.
But only on, only on Halloween.
Oh, you're talking about...
I'm talking about the 10 to 15 snow days required by an extended snowy winter combined with five days off for the annual spring hurricane. I then really begin to worry. So based on the survey, because of upcoming construction, trying to be collaborative with, with the region, I know that not putting February back may not be completely popular, but I do think that it's the most prudent decision for this. And the reason we're presenting only a one-year calendar is because we want to get more information about the construction schedule before providing the calendar for the year that follows. In, in general, I would prefer to offer calendar adoptions two years at a time so people can really plan and have predictability, but until we have a more locked-down construction schedule, I didn't feel that it was, it was the wisest thing to offer two years of calendar at this time.
Thoughts?
So, at the risk of being the devil's advocate, I do have a couple of concerns about this February break. The first is that actually the first survey we did after the, all the snow, when we still had a full five-day break, we had far fewer people in favor of keeping the five days than we did this time. So we actually saw an increase with the second survey of people in favor of the February break. I guess I'm, I actually have a question of what, what first drove the disappearance of that, because I got to tell you, an 11-week summer vacation is a really long summer vacation. And if we, and I'm not prepared to say that two hurricanes in a row are now, are the way we are going to live, and I'm also going to say that in 11 years that I've had kids in the Guilford Public Schools, we've missed two days of April vacation once. So I'm not prepared to approach a calendar fearing that we have tons of days to make up at the end of the year. So I am curious about what first drove this, because I think, you know, you're taking 60 percent of a February vacation away to add, you know, three out of 77 days to a summer break, and I, the math doesn't make sense to me. While, while three extra day, three less days a summer doesn't feed this argument, I do think that we know that kids lose knowledge over the summer, why we're trying to extend the summer, in that, it doesn't add up to me.
Why the decision was made locally, I can speak less knowledgeably to than why the decision has been happening throughout the state in multiple school districts. Part of the reason was around uninterrupted instructional time, that you begin to have a month that doesn't have a big extended chunk of time off. So the extended weekend is in there in recognition of, of the February break that was, but you get to have a month in February now that is almost a full month of instruction. To some degree, that was connected to the March implementation of CMT and CAPT, but it wasn't exclusively associated with that. It was the idea about being able to net a good long run from, from when you return from the holiday breaks through to April vacation, where you've got students and you can begin to develop some uninterrupted or almost uninterrupted instructional time. And then the other components, and I may have shared them a little bit flippantly with the annual hurricane, but I, I do think that we need to be cautious about a pattern of more severe weather that we are seeing. We've seen some severe winters, we've seen some more severe weather, and I do worry about, about having some days to be able to do that, particularly because with April being the only week's vacation on this half of the school year, I want to be able to absorb those days without impacting vacation time. I would rather be able to put a calendar out and say that we can absorb those at the end than have to trim a day or two days or three days off of April vacation. I've already spoken to people who have lost April vacation days in this calendar, and that's something that I want to work really hard. It was why we tried to net a day on Election Day this year, so that we wouldn't have to take away what is the only planned vacation where a family can really have some time to go away. I don't know if that's a satisfying answer, but it's the answer for what I saw as a trend.
I mean, another is the quality of education, and again, how, you can't measure it very easily, but at the end, in June, the heat and the other factors of, you know, I want to get out of here, is, I think, more of a negative than it is in February. Now, it's always going to be the end, and you're always now, end activities...
Yeah, see, I don't, I don't find that. I think that the end is, end is whenever it happens.
But I think the heat does have a, more of an impact in that regard, and operationally costs, the schools are still open, so I don't see that...
You could also say AP exams are set.
What?
AP exams are set? AP?
What does that have to do with February?
Since they're set, you get actually, you actually get more days of teaching before you actually get an AP exam.
This particular year is not a compelling, it's a less compelling year for a full February vacation because Christmas is on a Wednesday, so you've got, you know, you've got, you've got an eight-day break, eight days plus weekends, so, you know, whatever that adds up to, nine, 11, 12 days, yeah, in the, in the end of December, so, I mean, that, that, I mean, have we always done the full week when Christmas is on Wednesday?
You have to have people come in, but wouldn't you, we'd have to have students just come in on Monday, which seems kind of silly.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, and we try to, right, and we try very hard to avoid those island days, and part of the response to, you know, one of the rationale, and there's a number of rationale for why there's no February break. It's not just the weather, and it's not just one, but one of the rationale was trying to align with other districts within our region so that there's some consistency. And it is worth noting that some of those school districts have as many as 183 or 185 student days, and so by trying to, you know, and so they're running later into, they're still coming to the 16th or 17th because they have more student days in their calendar than we may have. I think, in fact, we are unusual in having only 180 student days. You'll see that many of our Dergi schools or neighboring schools have more than 180 student contact days. I'm not suggesting that at this time, but that's one of the reasons, you know, when you've got that longer school year, that, that shortening here makes the end of the year look safer in those districts, and if we want to align with those districts for other compelling reasons, we end up with a June 11th, last day of school.
What is the March 28th day off for the students? I guess it's on for staff.
PD.
PD. Professional development day? I guess, you know, one of the, one of the questions I have is, I think somebody brought up earlier, having these early dismissal and other days at, at different times. I mean, you know, you've got the two days off in February and then three days of that week, but I think there are people going to go away for that week, regardless of whether we schedule school or not, so the question comes up whether you put a PD day in that week, and even the half day, I mean, or, or one or the other, I guess. I mean, the half day or the... I mean, the half day or the early dismissal day, you know, it seems if the staff's going to be there, that might take away less instructional time to move that, but...
We had a lot of conversation around the placement of the early release days and the PD days, and to some degree, we've tried to place them where we will need, beyond the spot training for next year's rollout of evaluation. There's a lot of training of teachers and administrators that's going to be involved, so we tried to place those where we could. We also tried to think through the strategy around if people take off. We did track attendance this past year during what would have been February break as well, and we will do it again this coming February. We will track attendance, and I'll get attendance reports on what would have been February break. And again, I projected last year that we will see a drop in attendance, but next year we'll see a drop, but it'll be less of a drop. I'm waiting to see if that...
How much was it last February? How much did it drop?
I'm sorry?
How much did it drop last February?
I'd have to look. I can bring that back to you. It did drop, but it didn't drop outrageously. Yes, it didn't drop to a degree that we started to immediately rethink the decision, and we anticipated...
How about staffing absences during that, those three days?
Negligible. There was some student absence, but there was no staffing absence that spiked during those three days.
Because I mean, I do recall some of the more strident objections to the February break were, I think, some teachers whose families were off in different districts for that February, and that's really the only week that they could coordinate to be off with them. So I was just wondering if the staff...
I haven't heard any of that this year, myself. I mean, I don't know where...
Well, and again, I think that at least in this region, people are getting better at coming on board with that LEARN template calendar. There are a number of districts that have simply gone to the board and taken action and saying, "We're signing on to the LEARN calendar." I'm not looking to do that, but I am, I have suggested that we consider the template, and when it comes out each year, that we should look at it and try to align wherever it makes sense. Now, next year is a good example where we may not be able to align.
How are we differing from it?
We're differing from it in that we end a little bit earlier. I believe that our opening day may be slightly different, and I think we placed some of those professional days in ways that may not completely align. A number of the districts are doing collaborative professional development on their PD days, and while we have been involved in those conversations, we're the only Connecticut affiliate of IFL. Nobody else is working with the principles of learning the way that we are. I think that we happen to do a particularly good job of professional development, so we haven't signed on to the collaborative professional development that's happening at this time, although we continue to offer suggestions and advice. And there may be a point where we see that it's going to be valuable for us and that we join into that sort of activity. It's also difficult for us, being on the very edge of the region. Being the farthest west district makes it challenging geographically for us to send our people. It would be easier if we were placed more in the middle of the region.
You wouldn't want to put an early dismissal day on that February week either, because then that's basically...
That's a sport.
Well, no, it's basically inviting people to cut.
That's what I'm saying. Right, you're asking for it.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, but, I don't know. If they're going to take off anyway, then...
Yeah, but it's such a small amount.
Yeah.
You never can please everybody.
I think it's like a ticket to...
You know, it just makes me laugh. This discussion has been going on almost as long as I've been in education. I was going to say, almost as long as I've been around, but it's not been 70 years. So I think it's only been since, and there's always some people that want, and you can't please everybody. There's a lot of people that say, "My kids have nothing to do in February. It's cold. We're not going away. We can't afford to go away." Those kinds of things. So, I mean, I think...
I interpret that as a motion. Is that a motion to adopt this?
I make a motion that we adopt this calendar, and for all the reasons that have already been stated by Dr. Freeman.
May I bring one other date to your attention? I do want to draw November 11th to your attention and note that we have a professional development day scheduled. It allows students to have the day off on Veterans Day, but we have scheduled it as a professional development day. We have done that in the past. In fact, for the two years prior to last year, we had professional development day on Veterans Day. It seemed to work, and we're doing it again in an effort to be conservative. One of the letters that we all received talked about the multiple standalone holidays and days off, and we were trying to find a way, at least where possible, to have two things that we could make happen at the same time.
Okay. So there's been a motion seconded. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, where are we? Other policy issues, eight point five point two is agenda construction and meaning materials.
Bylaw, oh, agenda construction and meaning materials is bylaw.
Bylaw 9422.
9422. There's really just a small adjustment about the...
The website posted.
Website posted on the district's website, but the agendas and all that information will be posted. That's really the only change for that bylaw.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And these are act on tonight, right? We got this last one.
Yes.
Okay. So is that a motion we adopt that?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Eight point five point three.
Bylaw 9430, order of business, a few adjustments in our agenda, and that's basically all that's there, and we talked about those last month.
Into effect next meeting?
We'll have to add the Pledge of Allegiance next month if we...
And we do have a flag.
Make a motion to approve the 9430 changes?
Second.
Any other questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, did you...
No.
There was a question.
There was a question over here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Mr. Ireland had a question of where it came from. Most, or many boards of education, it came from me because what we didn't learn was we shared all our agendas, and I would say 95 percent of the agendas started with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have adopted that at LEARN, and at the same time, I was up in North Branford because my grandson was getting an award, and they started with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I think it's a very appropriate thing to do. Kids start school with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I think it's appropriate for our meetings, which is why I introduced it.
And we have finally removed the new business agenda item, which is an invitation to violate FOI.
This is our last chance for new business.
Yeah, that's right.
We have plenty of time.
We still have another hour and a half till midnight.
Anybody who wants to add an agenda item, please let me know, all right? I will be happy to, you know, to work it out, absolutely. But we can't be fooling with agenda items at meetings absent an emergency, or something urgent.
You've kept us in line, Mr. Chairman.
I understand. So anyway, all right, so what's the next one? We already voted on that, right? So the next one is eight point five point four.
Next one was Media Center, Library.
Was there a vote?
Did we vote?
Yeah, we already voted.
Yes, we did.
John had a question. John's not voting.
I understand. I'm quite sure that we voted before Mr. Ireland asked the question, so...
Maybe John abstained.
Does John's answer change anybody's mind?
Yeah, I'm going to abstain.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Media Center, 6346, it's all in red and all crossed out because we're eliminating it because it's in another place and it needn't be, was not appropriate, didn't belong there. They have job descriptions and all of that.
Seconded? Second, anybody?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And that's it for that. Thank you. Unfinished business, same FOI problem as with new business, but in any event. Policy committee, anything else?
Nothing new.
Facilities committee?
Yeah, we're just, we're going to meet at the end of this month on the 28th and go through the final bonds. But what we want to do is want to distribute the current thoughts on the bonds, understanding that the safety and security bond item is kind of a placeholder right now. It hasn't been fully vetted yet, so we put a number in there for now, just to get a general idea and make sure we hand something out, and people understand that it is a number.
And the...
And we're going to vote on it at the facilities subcommittee meeting group at the end of the month to present to this full board on the 28th. So if there's any questions and stuff, we'll be happy to...
And then there's February 4th, if you vote by the BOE on the bonding as well as the budget.
And the standing building committee did go through them, and it's in their minutes that they have reviewed it for its content, et cetera.
Okay. Do you want to, any finance committee issues other than what we already talked about? The high school building committee, anything going on there? A lot of talk about auditoriums and lots of talk about...
The good news is with some support from our local legislators and selectmen, we have had a state review that was moved up from an April 15th date to a March 4th date. That will necessitate on our February 25th meeting. We will be asking the building committee to join you to overview the plans that will then be presented to the BSF for their approval to go forward. So the agenda for that February 25th meeting will be a conversation about some of our highest-achieving students and that overview of the plans with the building committee and possibly some of our book club. So that would be the agenda for that evening. Those two, possibly three items, I would have...
You control the agenda? I understand. And I don't usually exercise that authority too strongly. I think I will though, that particular week.
At least two significant conversations.
I'd say the odds are quite high there's going to be a true agenda item, two item agenda. Go ahead. Anything?
But that would be the only thing from the building committee.
Okay. All right. Town committee, anything? Public questions? Not much public left. New business?
Widdled background.
We got...
If I may, real quickly, Health Advisory Committee met recently. We are in the process of looking at the wellness policy, reviewing it, editing it, making changes that will then be submitted when we are complete with that to the policy subcommittee.
Okay. We do have a short executive session on security, so if there is a motion to go into executive session...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will then adjourn from public session. There will be no more public votes this evening. Thank you.
Can we invite Mr. Bowden into the executive session?